So I'd like to call the meeting of the Palm Springs Public Library, Library Board of Trustees meeting to order. The time is 5:31 and it's Wednesday, October the 6th. Jeannie, can I have you do please a roll call?
And McBride?
Here.
Craig Borba?
Here.
Juanita Garner?
Here.
David Norgard?
Here.
Al Jones?
Here.
We're all present and accounted for.
Wonderful. Can you update us on the acceptance of the agenda, please?
The agenda was posted as required by law on before September 30th.
Now is the time in our agenda. We open up for public comments. So if there's anyone that would like to, remember the public might to make any comments, now is the time.
And did you want to do an acceptance of the agenda? Do you have ask for changes or anything at that time?
Right.
No, it's a separate item. All move that we accept the agenda as stated.
Oh, sorry. I skipped over. I'm trying this new monitor I've got so I can see it. So excuse me. And I can't see it, right? So I have a motion from trustee Borba to accept. May I have a second, please?
A second.
Okay, I can all have a roll call of those in favor of accepting.
Okay, Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Ben McBride?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
All right, the me, the honorable.
Now is the time for public comment in our agenda. So I'll open it up if there's any comments from the public who would like to speak.
So we have some people here on Zoom. We have Ed Pollard, did you want to speak?
Not really. I'm just want to see what's being going on.
Okay. And Robert Engel says he's just here to observe.
Welcome, both of you.
Lisa Brock is here from the library. Julie Warren's here from the library. David Sidley's with the foundation, Nancy Morrison with the friends, and then Ginger Simple. Did you want to say anything? Or are you just here to observe too? Ginger, did you want to give any public comment?
Damn mute.
Okay, I'm gonna assume that she's just here. She's from the press. So I assume that she's just here to observe too.
All right. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the our consent agenda. And may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
A load?
A second.
Now we have a roll call on that one, Jeannie.
Who was the second? I wasn't looking.
I was.
Okay, roll call. Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
All approved.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is our administrative reports. First up is the Friends of the Library. And Nancy, are you out there? Would you like to give us a report?
Okay, well, I really don't have much to say since we just had that meeting last week. And the friends don't meet again until this Tuesday. But I would like to make sure that all of you on the trustees are friends of, are members of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. If you're not, please let me know, and I can certainly arrange for you to join. Also want to remind everyone that we do have aprons, totes, t-shirts for sale of to support the Koi Pond. And in November, we're going to be having a great auction. So that's from November 14th. So I hope all of you, it's a silent auctions. I hope all of you will be involved and participate in that. And other than that, I don't think I really have anything to add to what we discussed last week.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a question from Barbara.
Nancy, are we gonna be receiving an email regarding the auction?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Nancy, I bought my t-shirt. I got my t-shirt. I love it. I got my renewal, but I think that my renewal is both for my corporate and our personal. I can't tell the, because it's got my name and our corporate name. Should I just send it in for both? Or what should I do?
Sure, you can. Yes, you can just, when you send it in, you could just put that it's, I think you'll have you renew, because when I do it, I actually renew twice, once for the personal, once for the corporate.
Yeah, I'll, I've been waiting to get both, but it seems I don't have both. I can go ahead and send it in, and I'll just write two checks for both. That way they won't get confused. How's that?
That's wonderful.
All right.
And we have really appreciate it.
Sure. Question, how do I join?
I can send you a membership thing. Who is that, David?
No, that's.
Al Jones.
Al Jones, okay.
Right, so I can join.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Always looking for members.
Always.
Do the same thing for me.
Sure, I will.
Thank you.
This is Jeannie. I'm just gonna jump in. I'm sharing my screen. I think you can see it, the Friends website.
Yes.
Yes.
Friends of the Palm Springs Library.org. So there's a button actually right there for membership that you can.
Right, you can join.
And then I just wanted to show the shirts and the aprons and the tote bag. They're very cute.
I can happily report Nancy and Jeannie that that button works just fine. I used it right after our last meeting last week.
Okay, thank you. Good, yeah. So can both of you join just going through the website? Or do you want me to send you paper form?
I'll make myself a note. I can do it through the website.
Okay, great. Well, good. And okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I have something I'd like to ask Craig.
Go ahead.
And are you available tomorrow that I could give you a call and we could talk about finances or something?
Who are you asking?
Dr. Borba.
Oh. What time would be good for you, Nancy?
Just let me know what works for you. I'll work it in.
Okay. At nine o'clock? Does that work?
Perfect.
Great. And you have my number?
Uh, no. Oh.
I guess it's a public information now.
You know what? I can get it. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm already, it's probably on, it's probably on my membership ready, so.
Okay.
Okay.
If not, I'll get it from Jeannie.
All right.
Everybody knows your phone number.
Yeah, we don't need to put it out there.
We can find you. We know your phone number. So hey, Jeannie, I gotta share a funny story. So Tad saw the t-shirts and he had to have one for us. So he stopped by to buy one. And the staff person, you know, sold him the t-shirt and and he said, and I don't know how it came about, but she said, he said, my husband is chair of the library board of trustees. She said, oh, I know. Why isn't he here buying a t-shirt? And he said, well, he sent me to buy it.
What t-shirt are we talking about, by the way?
Oh, the new ones they just came out with. They're really very nice. They're pretty.
No, I shared the screen.
It's pretty good.
Yeah.
All right.
It has the Koi Fish on it.
So for adults, you could get black or white or red. Then the children's shirts come in cute teal or bright yellow.
Wow, those are great. I'll go get one.
The logo is super adorable. I love it.
Really is. Very nice.
It's not really the Friends logo, but it's the graphic representing the Koi. You can put a Koi pond while you're here.
That's great. All right. So I think I was pumped on that one. That's okay.
I was relieved that someone said, oh, I know.
I think.
Exactly.
She knew who he was. So comes in there and that's.
That's great. That's good.
Yeah. Let's move on to the, thank you, Nancy, for that report. It was, as always.
Thank you.
Very lightning. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's move on to David Sidley of the Library Foundation. Hi, David. You have any report for us?
Good evening, everybody. I don't have much. We are all really excited about that very productive meeting we had at last week. We think we've got some good direction there. I would like you all to make a donation to the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. You see there that handy button you can click and donate. A dollar, $10, $1,000, whatever you want is fine with us.
The address is pslibraryfoundation.org.
Thank you. And that's about all I have for the moment. Oh, we're gearing up for our annual annual giving letter, which goes out to a little over 1,000 people. That's a big project for us. And we're still busy recruiting new members.
Wonderful.
That's it.
Great. Thanks, David. Appreciate that. Jeannie, anything from library staff you'd like to report?
Well, of course, of course. They got all the pretty pictures. I didn't even, I just have. So the library, we are going, grown great. Things are going wonderfully. We've been doing a lot of passport appointments. And I think that's in your statistics. I want to find that real quick because I'm very proud of my staff. They're learning a lot. Is it in there or not? Lisa, passport, 61 passports in August.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah. So I'm very happy about that. We're able to help the community with that service. You can make your appointment. Just go to our website, pslibrary.org and scroll all the way to the bottom with the passport link and get all the information about that. The city is conducting that community survey. So don't forget about that. The deadline is October 11th. It says it takes about 15 minutes to complete. And you can find that through the city's website. I'm sure I found it on Nextdoor. But it's polco.us. So P O L C O dot U S slash Palm Springs, C A, 2021. And there is a version in Spanish. It's polco.us, P O L C O dot U S slash Palm Springs, C A, Espanol, 2021. So we hope that you do that survey for the community. Measure J has opened up their application process for community funding for the million dollars that they have available and to spend on community projects. The application's available at psmeasurej.com. And the deadline for that one's December 2nd. We have hard copies of that application available at City Hall, Palm Springs Library, Wellwood Murray Memorial Library, Demuth, Community Center, James O. Jesse Community Center, and Leisure Center. And that is available in English and Spanish as well. I'm glad that Nancy mentioned the Friends of the Library merchandise. T-shirts for adults are $25, kids are $20, tote bags are 20. The apron's $18. I know that tote bag has a side pocket for your water bottle, and then it has a couple, two interior pockets. So it's a good quality tote bag. And you can show off your style by representing the Friends. Halloween is, drive-throughs coming. We are going to do a Halloween drive-through, Spooktacular, on Wednesday, October 27th. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And it's completely in the driveway of the library, 300 South Sunrise Way. We will be there. We are going to have the costume character Pete the Cat. So if you're familiar with Pete the Cat, he's so cute. Those stories are adorable. So Pete the Cat's coming. And you can, you can wave at him and take his picture. The Palm Springs Power Baseball Team, or the Palm Springs Power Baseball is going to be here. And they're gonna have Rocky the Ram. And Mizell Senior's gonna be there. Parks and Recreation's coming. And the Friends of the Library are gonna give away books. And we're gonna give away candy and goodies. And if you flash your library card, you will get a bonus prize. And everybody who comes can enter to win one of four $25 Amazon gift cards. So it's completely drive-through. Wear your costumes, but wear your masks too. So incorporate it. And come see us on October 27th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And then I would like Julie to talk about some of our other events, if you guys allow me to do that.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So we do have some events coming up in October. So we have one of our first lecture talks that's coming up next Monday, the 11th of October at 3:30. We're gonna be hosting Jim Cornet. He is known around the desert. And he's gonna be talking about the wonders of Coachella Valley. The top 10 places visitors and residents both should not miss and should definitely get out and see here in our valley. So we're excited to be hosting him. That will be on Zoom on Monday. And if you're interested in attending, you can email me and I will send out the Zoom link that morning of the event. We are also going to be having a lecture about Medicare enrollment, learning the basics, and also getting your questions answered. And that is on Monday, the 25th of October, from 11:00 in the morning until noon. And a representative and certified agent is going to be talking about kind of basics of all the plans and then answering any questions. So that will also be on Zoom. So if you're interested in it's your time to sign up, don't miss enrollment and get more information and get your questions answered at that Zoom event on the 25th. We also are continuing our memoir writing workshop. The group is meeting for the second time next Wednesday, the 13th. That has been going well. We had opportunity for 10 participants and we had nine people sign up. So we're very excited about that. And it is definitely a working workshop and where they write stories and submit to each other and critique each other. And kind of learn the basics of writing their memoirs. And so every month we do a different chapter. And so at the end, they'll end up with 12 chapters. So we're excited about that continuing as well. And then finally, I just want to remind everyone, and you'll hear me talk about this again, because library is one of the co-founding sponsors of the LGBTQ+ History and Archives Project. And they're having their first inaugural event, which is an exhibit that will be the Weekend of Pride. It'll start on the evening of November the 4th at the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library in the Cornelio White Community Room. And then it'll extend through the whole weekend through Sunday, the 7th. So where the library is excited to be hosting in it, and it will be one of our first in-person events to be taking place. The exhibit itself will open, like I said, the evening of the 4th for two hours during street fair, village fest, from 6:00 to 8:00. And then on Friday and Saturday, it'll be open all day from 10:00 in the morning till 5:30 in the evening. And then on Sunday, it will be open from 12:00 noon until 5:30 because of the pride parade that morning. So we're excited to be hosting it at the Wellwood Library, and it'll be free and open to the public for anyone to attend. So we hope to see you all there. All right, thank you. Any questions, I should say?
I have, Pete, for the opening night of the LGBTQ. That's gonna be wonderful. I can't wait.
Great. They want to know your email address to sign up for the work.
Oh, yes, thank you. It is julie.warren, W A R R E N, at palm springs c a dot gov, G O B. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's our report.
Thank you. Jeannie, on the Measure J application, I want to revisit that. So after we have our meeting of our priorities. So there's been a lot of emails bouncing around. I know with the foundation asking about that. So can we also have a discussion about that a little bit later?
Yeah.
All right. So let's see. Next on our agenda, thank you for all those reports, everybody. Next on our agenda is the, I'm sorry, guys, I'm.
Treasure.
Treasure.
For a report. So Jeannie, I think I'm beginning to like the new format, I think. But you want to walk us through this latest report? And as I know, you and I have had it going back and forth the other day. So what's, what's going on with it?
Okay, so I was just on the phone today with the finance department because we are still not seeing a full, complete picture and accurate reporting of our finances for the trust fund because they are still working to get the money rolled over and get it corrected so that it is accurate. Because the first thing, the glaring thing, the notes receivable says 90,000. No, that's completely inaccurate. I know it's wrong. I've got documented proof, so.
Well, this is on page 14 of our handouts, correct?
Yes, you're right. Thank you. On page 14, you'll see notes receivable. It just says $90,000. And we know it's closer to 66,000. Right around that number. And then I did get it. I saw a check today. So I know there's more. But so we're working on that. The operating bank account on this account is listed as 1,936,910.75. Also am inquiring about the interest receivable for 2,900 because last fiscal year, there was a withdrawal of that exact amount that said that there was a correction. So we're still trying to get this squared away. Accounts payable is checks going out. These, the fund balance numbers, you know, it's got estimations and appropriations and whatnot. So I'm just gonna skip ahead on that part. And then this page is, what I've done is, again, merged the three departments altogether into a simplified page so that it's easier. These are our budgets, what we've spent, what's incurred. As you'll see, the available budget and the percent use. Nice, clean page compared to what we used to see. Like, I think that's what you were basically saying, Ed.
Yes.
A little bit nicer looking. Well, now, this is the Library Trust Fund has a bunch of goose eggs because they haven't rolled our money proper, properly yet. We haven't been able to pay our bills. It's just, it's, it's coming. So I want to reassure you, it's not forgotten, but it's, it's on its way.
What would the total be roughly?
Of the trust fund?
Yes.
The 1.9 million is, it's pretty accurate.
Oh, it is 1.9, okay.
Yeah, that, that amount's pretty accurate.
All right.
Getting these funds set up where we have, we usually have a big amount sitting in the future library projects, line item, trust fund books, the profit serves up, you know, 100 and what we said, 160,000 now at this point. And some of these need to go away. Trust fund furniture, we finished that project. That, that needs to disappear.
Now, before you move, before you move, go back. So fellow trustees, what, what I, what I meant in my opening remarks is that we used to get this report and it was much harder to understand what they, what was going on there. So this happens to be the new system the city has rolled out. So this is not just for us, it's for the entire city, for all departments. And as Jeannie keeps talking, the numbers might be wrong, but those of us who've been around a while, the format is much better, I think.
Which better.
And clear to follow. I, I trust that the numbers will start filling in correctly here. But this will be probably our, one of the reports that you would need every week to, or every month to talk about what's been going on with our money. So this is the summary right here, in addition to the balances that we just previously saw. And I don't know if David Sidley is still on the phone or not, but the first thing I called, of course, was that balance on the loan from the foundation. But you're, we know that's not right. So they're gonna be fixing that, correct?
Yeah.
I see that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of, it's old school. I have a chart.
What's the balance?
66.
Very good.
If I'm right, plus, plus 2,000. So 64. If I.
So for those of you who may not have known, the $100,000 that was loaned to the foundation to start, the foundation has been working really hard over the last year to start paying that down. So they're giving us what monthly payments, right? To, and so that balance has gone from 100 down to 66. So that 90,000 really should be more like $66,000.
Yeah, and we're, we're working on it. And even I was able to pull last year's record, last year's financials that showed it was in the 70s or 80s, you know.
Payments on this earlier, right? And payments on the one you sent us. So I know that there's some payments coming through. It's just not the, it hasn't been updated correctly.
Yeah, this page on the screen, you're right. So this page on the screen, I can see right here on August 4th, there's $4,000. That's two, $2,000 payments. And then September 13th is another $2,000 payment.
We're catching up.
They are reflected here. Now, see, it's interesting because you see that, that's why I called, because I, this doesn't make any sense to me because you see notes receivable, $90,000. And then the chart, the the changes, and then the ending balance is 84,000. So why didn't it change it to 84,000 on that top balance, the cash balance?
Yeah, it's almost like they haven't brought in all those payments that had processed on the old system yet, right? Is that what it?
Right, yeah. They're, they're just trying to get this one set up. They set up $90,000. They knew it was 90,000 at one point.
Yeah, but isn't that, isn't that under the category beginning balance?
Yeah.
So.
Yes. Oh, you're right. Yeah, right there. But then if we go back to that balance sheet.
It's not changed there.
Still my correct.
It's selling a $90,000 asset on that. So just be assured, we are all working on it. We're, we're gonna make sure it's correct. This is, this report is the more detailed version of the transactions for this, this particular line item. This is your cash balance. These are the transactions, all the transactions that have gone through. And when you see debits, it's actually in accounting. And this is why I called too. In accounting, this is, this column, the, the one listed under debits is actually, are actually deposits going in. In my mind, a debit is a takeaway. And this is, this is adding it in. And the credits column are funds going out. So checks being generated, or this is the Friends money that was, and you'll see on the next page. Real quickly, I'll jump to it. But the Friends, the Friends of Library, we have gotten it stopped to go through your account. Took us until mid-August to get them to stop, but we, we finally got it stopped. And so this will stop being, right now, I ran, I ran the full year. If, when, if I ran a monthly report for September, you wouldn't even see anything happening. This, this fund would go away because there wouldn't be any transactions in September.
So.
This is the full year.
So for trustee Jones and trustee Norgard, what we're talking about here is that the city used the trust fund as a way to process cash receipts that came in through the cash register in the library when someone would buy a book from the Friends bookstore. And it, it was, it was driving us crazy every month when we'd look at it and wonder why was there like $100 coming through, right? So we have worked with the city to no longer have that set up differently now. So we're just cleaning this up. So eventually this will go away, right? Jeannie, we won't see these things.
Yes, eventually, once things start acting normal, your reports, I wouldn't run a full year report and give you, you wouldn't see all this. You would just see this, this, seriously, this line item would disappear because it would have zero transactions.
So, so all of this is detail of what came in, like 35, 25, 59, 22, et cetera, et cetera. So will we get in future just a bottom line total like the 2033 you have here?
Say that again?
Pardon me? I say in future, as they clean this up, will we just get a single total for cash receipts?
It's up to you. You, in the past, you all have requested detailed transactions. So we've gone both ways. We, we've had where you just get the bottom line. Monthly summary. And then recently, the request was, can we get all the transactions?
What, what I might talk, you know, when we talk, Ed and, and Jeannie, when I get a better idea of the whole accounting. When I was on the airport commission, what we ended up doing is really simplify. We had the detail. But we pulled all of the commissioners and the 19 said, no, we don't need that level of detail. Just give us kind of the overarching, you know, 52,000 foot level. So I, we might want to consider, you know, what level of detail do we want to share? It's always available. But what did we want to do? So we can talk later on that then.
This, this, this report has evolved since I've been on the board. We've gone from a high level to detail because we saw things happening that we didn't understand. So for a while, we got to the detail because we were trying to figure out why, for example, this $100 would come through and $100 would go out, right? So it was, it was $100, but still, you know, we wanted to watch that 1.9 million. So it was, it was a hundred dollars, but still, you know, we wanted to watch that one point nine million.
Right.
So I, I think that once we, we get on this new system and we all feel everything is correct and they've got everything up to date, we should have that discussion. Do we, do we want to go back to a, a simpler version of this? Certainly, but I think for now, we're watching all this to see how it's gonna clean up.
Right.
And as an example, on your screen here, that, where it shows all library expenditures, this would be an example of the higher level transactions where you would see the charges, the balance, the starting balance, the, the monthly charges, and then the available budget, or what was year-to-date spent. So that would be more reasonable, but your, your category is a bunch of zeros right now.
Okay.
You shouldn't and typically don't have a lot of activity in your account. In the past, what it was is the daily friends money going in and out, and
Right.
It drew a lot of attention, so it was, it's much cleaner now to just have only your projects.
I, I think that what we, what would be also very educational is that as we last, I think a couple of meetings ago, we kind of got into how you use this account to pay for those things that we gave you money for, right? So you're running invoices for books and videos or whatever. So those are the kind of things that we, we might see a great detail, right? We might see them coming in and out. Just so we know that you're spending the money, I guess. But these kind of things, we really shouldn't have anyways. We don't want to see them, correct?
It's up to you. Yeah, you can say, we just want to see what, where we are, like, like what, what's on the screen? Where you would just see the beginning budget, what was, what's been spent so far and what's left. And, but, you know, that's how our normal expenditure status reports were. They were very very simple, but then you could, if you, if you needed the details, you could go get it, or I could provide it. So, yeah.
One more page, Jeannie?
Sorry, I couldn't, yeah. Just the last page of that is just one more line item for the contributions, not governmental. There's a twenty-five dollar ninety-five cent check. Honestly, it came from a library and it went into your account on mistake instead of our, so you're welcome. One of our books. And in our library loan. I think that's what that is.
So, um.
But I'm not even, I'm not even sure. Yeah, yeah.
So what I'd like to do is, as we were speaking a few minutes ago, I'd like for the finance committee to maybe have a meeting here soon to kind of review this with Jeannie and, and to have Al understand what he needs to present each of these meetings when it comes to the financial report. So maybe we can do that before the next meeting and give an attempt to start introducing him into it, so he can kind of help you with the presentation. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, that's great. It's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, are there any questions about this? I, I know that it's, for some of you, this is, is new. And for all of us, this is a new format. So we're all kind of beginning at the same place, to be honest. Any questions for Jeannie on the financial report?
No, but I really liked the new format. It's so easy to read as compared to what we had before.
Oh.
Boy.
Yeah, it does. I just want to see our money in the right place now. Once we get there, I, I will, I will love it even more, right? I mean, more importantly, anyone who picks this up, no matter where you are, you know, a member of the public or whomever, they should be able to read this report and know where our money's at. So that's, I want it to be that simple. We're getting there. Thank you, Jeannie, as always. Our next item is, as you guys recall, a week ago tonight, right? Where's the time flying? We had an amazing meeting with all the groups and established the priorities for the library. And again, I want to thank all of you who participated in that. And I put it on the agenda for tonight, just to kind of allow us to have one more discussion about it. And to see if there's any changes that we want to make to it, or if we've got a chance to sleep on it a few, a week. And then start talking about what's the next phase of this? And, and have Jeannie let us know what her process will be. But more importantly, I know that both the Friends and the Foundation and the trustees are quite anxious and, you know, what can we do next? You know, how can we get some of these projects kicked off? How can we get started on some things? So I, that's why I wanted Jeannie to, to talk a little bit more about this recent Measure J application process. Because I think we all want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity that we might be able to apply for some money that could help us with some of these projects. But before we get to that, let me, let me stop there. Anybody have any thoughts, questions, concerns, re-thoughts on the priority documents you have in front of you?
One question. And, and maybe it's my recollection on this because we talked about the creating spaces in the library to meet community needs. And you may recall, we had a discussion about, talking about both physical and what's the other word?
Virtual?
Virtual, thank you. And I thought we were gonna kind of include both of those terms in it, but maybe I don't recall correctly.
I think we looked at that spaces could be defined as though, when we talk about spaces. It's gonna.
Right, so, yeah, but I thought we were trying to clarify, again, we're talking not just physical. Because I think the tendency is to think about physical space in library to meet community needs versus virtual opportunities. I, I won't belabor the point. I just wanted to, to ask the question on that.
Can you say that again? I might, just seeing, oh, my computer's messing up again.
Okay, it was, it was, yeah, it was on the, the priorities we talked about. It was really the, the, move, the third priority, I think. Or second, excuse me, create spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs. And the other was secure funding to create spaces in the current library to meet community needs. That was the priorities for council. And I thought we had a little discussion about specifying that we're talking about physical and virtual spaces, not just physical. But my recollection may be a little off.
No, I think, so Al, are you talking about the library document? Are you talking about the Board of Trustees document? You know which one?
It's item seven A that I'm looking at, as well as, yeah, seven A. It's the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Okay, that helps. So, yes, I remember we had a conversation about, especially when it related to the recent foundation donation to buy hotspots, right? We kind of got all good to how that has changed the program at the library. And should we, should we include that as a goal to expand that program, first of all? But are there other virtual programs that we might want to include in this? If that's, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you suggesting that we add that? And you want us to discuss that, or?
Well, I don't know that we need to discuss it again. I, I, I was hoping we would see it in there, like, create physical as well as virtual spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs. That was it. Just, just to keep people alert and city council members that we're talking not just about physical space, which I think when we tend to talk about libraries, we tend to think about physical, but also talk about the virtual. I, again, I don't want to belaborate it. We talked about it last week. I mean, if I'm the only one that feels that way, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with consensus. So I just thought the clarification that really brought people's attention.
Yes, Juanita.
No, I, I think it's really important that that wording be put in there. I think it, it's important that we can, that, that it's written down, virtual spaces, because that's what, you know, a lot of things are going to. And I think it's something that people expect at this time and want to know that it's available. So I think, I think it's, I think you're right on. We need to, we need to include that wording. I think it's important.
So my, my feeling on this is that Jeannie has established her priorities. And unless Jeannie wants to change hers, we have more power over what our, our priorities are, right? So on the trustee document, which is below the one, and I'm sorry, here I go again, trying to scroll this screen. We're in, let's go to set, item seven A versus Library Board of Trustees as the Board of Commissioner Committee name.
Right.
So Jeannie, is that fair? I mean, you don't want to change yours, because I think last time you, you didn't feel the need to update the wording on your particular plan, correct? Am I saying that correct?
Right, we, I, I feel like that's two separate issues. Physical space as tasks and a virtual, virtual, focusing on virtual services is a, is a separate item. I'm sorry, can't share my screen.
That's okay, that's okay. So.
That is my very concern, that they get separated as opposed to be brought together as a, as a.
So, and I hear, I hear both of you. I, I, I feel, let, let's, let's, let's talk about our form. I could see in number two, if we want to make a change, we could say, secure funding to create both physical and virtual spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs on our document, right?
And never do it, and never do it.
Because that, we're saying that is our priority, and that supports Jeannie's program all, all together, right? But would you guys like to see that change maybe on there? Because remember, we created that document kind of sitting here right now. So I think that if we want, this is our last time to, to make the change. So do I hear that we'd like to change that?
Yes.
Trustee Norgard, how about you?
I, I, I would favor the change for the trustees document. I see the point that you made last week, Al. I get that. I think it'll simply be more explicit. Well, it will be, in fact, more explicit if we use terms in our document.
Trustee Barbara, how about you? You're on mute.
I agree with the change.
Trustee Gardner, how about you?
Yes, I think, I think it's great. I think we need to change it.
Okay, so, um, and another thing in thinking about this, I think that it also would set an example for both of our organizations, both the trustees, I'm sorry, both the Friends and the Foundation, to hook into that, right? So if they have an opportunity to help us support that, like if they want to expand the hotspots again, or buy computers, I don't know what that might be, I think it would fold into ours, then we would then fold up to Jeannie. I'm sure Jeannie would not say no if we came along and said, we want to buy here a hundred hotspots because it's so popular. But I can understand why hers presenting to city council shows that she's much more inclusive in just saying spaces, right? So, um, with that, Jeannie, can you please update our number two? To, to read, secure funding to create both virtual, I'm sorry, both, let's say both physical and virtual spaces in the current library facility to meet community needs.
Absolutely.
And, and, yes, sir.
I'm just gonna say, yeah, can that be shared with the Friends and the Foundation, our change?
Absolutely. We'll let them see that. As a matter of fact, they're both on here. What, where is, let's look at theirs. So the next one down is.
Page twenty-four would be the Foundation and page twenty-six would be the Friends.
Well, the Foundation, I don't. Somebody, yeah, the Foundation, I don't know, the Foundation really didn't focus on this as much as raising money for the library, right? So I think the Foundation plan probably is inclusive as well. Let's look at the Friends. The Friends said, fry building, let's get moving, which still tickles me. So I mean, I, I think that once again, that theirs is, they're very specific about what they're interested in living for to support. And so I guess my question would be for the Friends, would they want to somehow? Well, I don't know, I don't know if they really need to have a, a change on theirs either. I think ours is probably the best change, right?
Yeah, I would say just on ours, right.
Let me just point out that the, and the other two organizations are not inconsistent with the change we already, that we just made.
Yeah.
Well, and we had said that, you know, our main purpose is always to support whatever the library needs on their day-to-day. So whether that's virtual or physical, whatever, we're there to support them.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, um, we're gonna make the change to our plan, Jeannie, and then I think that these plans are, we're, we're done. So can you share with us what, what is the next step in this? And is there anything that we need to do next?
So I have already submitted our requests, our papers to the city, but I will send them the update. It's not, not, yeah, I will send the revision. I'm also gonna include the Friends and the Foundation just as a.
Oh, absolutely.
Serial, because I think that they should see that we value this process, this document, and we've got other support. So that's good. I'm gonna send that in. And then the city council is hosting their visioning session. It's, it's a public meeting, and it's on November nineteenth and twentieth. We're having a strategic visioning retreat with more details to come. But there will be time for a public comment. You can come and observe. And that's when they're gonna set their priorities for probably the next two years and decide what projects are priorities for the city.
So I, I, and I know you, you may not be able to answer this question at this point, but I'm assuming that they're going to have this open session, and are they going to? Will, will, we know that the library will be discussed, or that parts and rec will be discussed, or is it just come and share with us your vision as a citizen of Palm Springs, what you're thinking? You know what, how it's gonna be run?
I don't, but I, I, the ones that I've attended before, I've participated in these before, and they usually have a consultant who directs them on the process.
Okay.
And so I'm not sure at what level the department heads are gonna participate this time. But in the past, we've gone around and, and talked about our priorities for our departments. And I think this, this document is a way to speed that process along, because we'll have submitted that already. And we can talk about it as a group. What do we think is the most impactful for the city? What, what are the most critical needs? And then they're gonna probably rank things and discuss, and then choose. So it's probably a, a whole process with, with someone in charge to, to guide them and make sure that the data, like our consultants that we've had.
So I, I think we should be prepared as a group, and I, and I say us, it includes the Friends and the Foundation, that we may all want to either be at that meeting, have strong representation at those meetings, and have these documents in our hands and talk about how this is a group of citizens that have come together and strongly support the library and the priorities that you've set forth, and, and we're, we're putting it to paper, right? So I think that that's a strong statement to the council when they hear that, don't you?
I do. I think it's great.
I think so too. All right, I, again, good work. I think that this, this is something that we'll have in front of us now for quite some time. So I want to go to the next topic that we, we brought up just a few minutes ago. And I know that there has been, I was in a string of communications, especially on the Library Foundation, where a member of the board saw this announcement and started having conversation. I love the fact that everybody's ready to get started. And I said, let's, let's wait until tonight to have a little more clarification. That process that, that's been announced, Jeannie, that's for anybody in the city or any kind of group. So it's, and now I'm, where I got confused, and I hope I didn't, you know, dampen the enthusiasm of the Foundation. But you had told us that you were working as a department head on Measure J, and that you were going to be asked by Measure J to submit some needs that could be funded by Measure J. And is this the same process, or is this a separate process? You know.
And I'm still almost unclear about it, too. I was told that the departments have their own process. And just as recently as, as Monday, we do have a, we have a capital improvement project form that we fill out and we submit to the engineering department to tell them what our needs are. And then they work with, within themselves to figure out what are priorities, and then they go to Measure J, you know. You know, so it's a city, city as a department, we do our process. And this is really, this, this one million dollars is community money. So, um, us, me talking about the fry building, I feel like that's, that's my internal. I am not telling you to not do that, and I think you should, I think you should do whatever projects you think are important. I, we should all apply, because, uh, you know, I, I, I don't wanna bombard the paperwork, but, um.
But that's what I'm looking for, because, you know, I, I don't want all these groups to rush in only to, uh, jeopardize what you've got to do as well. I want it to be supportive, right? Because we, we have, first of all, we've, we've, I think we've got the money if we want to do the fry building. And, and I think that Measure J will give us some money because it's in their priorities. So I, I think it's a matter of us being organized around the ask to measure J. And so I guess I'm asking you for direction for the rest of us. Should we work on this application together as, uh, the trustees, the foundation and the friends, saying that we'd like to move this project forward, we want some Measure J money and that we'll try to make up the rest, whatever needed? Or what, give us some direction here on what you think we should do?
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the way I read it, and, and I may be wrong, but the way I read it was that there was a separate allotment of funds and it said to community nonprofits, and so that's why I thought we could apply for a grant for something totally different. But if it's inappropriate for us to double dip, or you think that it's somehow gonna screw up, you know, the bigger goal, then we won't. But I was just looking at it like, oh.
No, I don't think so at all. I mean, I think, I, I think that, now, by the way, what I do think, and this is, I don't know, Genie, we may have to, maybe you do know, is that the trustees might not be in that group to apply for this because we're a city board, right? And we have a trust.
There's a checkbox that says city commission.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I don't think it's double dipping, David. I think that if we've all agreed that the fry building is a project that we want to go after and we want to work on that building as all of us coming together, I think the applications, I think it'll be a strong application from all of us asking for some funding, uh, to do that.
Um, I think that, um, I think you each can apply and you can each apply for the same thing. It says, um, it, the different department, it says city commission even has a checkbox for city department. So, um, it has organization, individual, neighborhood. Um, so I, I think it's, it's fair to do, if, if the foundation thinks that the fry building is important, they should apply for that. If the friends also think it's important, let, they should too. And if, if we all do, then, you know, that, yes, there are four applications and that, you know, we might be able to, uh, touch on different uh, reasons why. And as a group, we will come up with a, yes, it might be four applications for one thing, but it would be, um, I think it would be helpful because each one would supplement the other and not, it wouldn't be a co- competition.
So Genie, here's, here's, here's one place where, another place where I'm a little confused. And I think this is where we, we need some clarity on this from you. We talked about funding, um, new carving outs and existing meeting facilities in the current building, right? We kind of know that that's, that's not gonna be the amount of money that you need to do the fry building, right? Um, so is that, is that a project that we need to include here? Or, uh, you know, we, we know that our goal here is to increase meeting facilities and to, uh, give the library more space. We, we all agree to that clearly in our priorities, we just went through that discussion. What do you need the most, what, what do you want us to ask for? I mean, do you want us to buy, to go after money to do, but I mean, maybe stop there. Do we all have enough money that we could put a meeting room in the current library? And that might not be a project that we would go after Measure J, for example? Um, I, I, I don't think that's gonna be, you know, millions of dollars to do that in, in the current facility, right? Is that a project that we say, we'll all just find the money amongst the trust fund and the, the money at the foundation and the friends? I don't know. Or do you want us to include all of this? I mean, am I making sense?
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should include it. And then, um, they might find something that, um, strikes their fancy, and they might say, oh, that's really, that's something we hadn't thought of and that's interesting and, and it fits right within the budget that we can afford. Um, I think I was just thinking, what else can I come up with, like other projects? Cause we, you know, we need a lot, I was like, oh, it'd be kinda neat to, uh, redo the wall on the public patio and make it more of an art wall. Um, that's see-through. And, uh, that was one of the parts of our renovation was that we were designed that outer wall. That's a project, a, a smaller project that could be, um, something Measure J might wanna work on. It, it, so, uh, we could piece as part out some of the things that we do wanna do to renovate the library, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they paid for computers for us before, we, we've done some technology with, with Measure J funds. We bought, um, one of our self-check machines and, um, all, all of our public computers. We've, we've done purchases like that. So they will do different types of, um, projects that aren't just all painting and capital type things.
Um.
So I don't know if I answered your question, I say just.
You, you kinda did, so I, I think that maybe what we should do, yeah, when is the deadline for this application?
December second.
Be here before we know it. Um. As, as the trustee chair, I think that we should, I would like to see us come together with membership from all three groups. Talk about this application, talk about a way, a strategy of applying, identifying what we wanna apply for and then decide that we wanna do it together or do we wanna do it separately? Um, uh, that's my opinion, Nancy, David, any, uh, Juanita, you have a comment?
Well, I, I think if I'm reading this correctly, it says that we do have to apply separately.
Okay.
Isn't that part of the eligibility? It, it says that we need to apply separately, even if it's for the same project.
Then, maybe the discussion is what projects are we going to apply for?
I think it's more impactful if, um, the different groups all apply for different parts of the same project. So like, if we're all going after the fry building.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the foundation might say they wanna help you with the community spaces and the friends want to, um, establish the book, um, uh, the book sale area. And the library wants the parts for the archives. I mean, I think between, if all of us could get some money on this, and I think it's more impactful when they see, hey, three different groups want to get this fry building done. And the trustees are willing to put in money for it as well. Um. Like I said, let's get moving. We wanna get this going, we've been talking about this for years.
I admit the truth, yes.
I think that you're right, it needs to be a coordinated effort. Um, and if we, and if we focus on different aspects of it, that's what's gonna be the most powerful because then we're gonna end up with a complete project rather than a little piece of a big project.
So I think that once again, we need to probably have a discussion about, um, it sounds to me like definitely the fry building is something we want to apply for. And it sounds like then we could, we could also apply for the meeting rooms in the current main building as a, another option. Uh, but maybe what we need to do is, is just what Nancy suggested is that we talk about the fry building being our primary project and each of us then go after what we think we need. Um, and that's the, the part of the project we apply for. Uh, that allows Genie then, that allows Genie then to, uh, do her application or mi- might bring it all together in terms of there might be something that she has to ask for. Um, that we may not, for example, it'll, it'll be a city building. So the, the process of designing it and doing all of that has to come from the city, right? So that's, that might be what Genie asked for, is the planning money and the architectural and all those things that we don't wanna touch right now. We'd much rather do the things that building needs, like, you know, putting a new air conditioner in it and getting a new bookstore in there. There might be things in there that we might want to fund to make, uh, no air conditioning, excuse me. We might want to make sure it has, you know, state of the art technology or state of the art something that she may not be able to ask for, am I making sense? Because I know the city's not gonna want to give it all the bells and whistles, but we all do, right? Um, so that could be the parts of it that we ask for, yes, sir. Trustee Norgar.
Um, thanks. Um, I, I just have a basic question here, what, what is the dollar range of likely amounts of these grants?
They have one million dollars and they'll probably get requests for a hundred million dollars in funding, probably.
Okay, so.
So it's a battle, it's a big fight.
Big fight. Um, do they, i- i- historically, have there been upward limits?
Never one to do this, this is kinda new, isn't it?
Um, they, they've had this before and they, they have funded, I'm, I'm not sure what they funded in the past with the million, but there have been little projects that have come through, like as an example, my computers, that was a, you know, that's a, a smaller project, probably a twenty-five thousand dollar project. Um, so I don't know what they, what they've done. I think, you know, I, actually, I, I heard that they might have done the landscaping at the leisure center in the Circle Drive and that was a ten thousand dollar project. So there have been little things like that, just little improvements. Where you go, that'd be really nice if they would just.
But to me, we have, we have two things in our favor. First of all, we've got a strong group of citizens that are asking for some money. Second of all, this project is in the priority list for Measure J. So we're not coming up with something that they would view as we're gonna give some money to a group and we won't ever see that again. It's gonna, it's gonna then fold into a much larger project of what we're trying to do here, right? So, but now I don't see them giving us a hundred thousand, maybe a hundred thousand, but I don't see them giving us, cause that, you're right, a million dollars is gonna have to go a long way for a lot of people, right? So, uh.
And you know, so think, um, think of those other projects that aren't on their list. So the fry building is on the list, yes, go ahead and do it, you can apply for multiple things. But this is really for stuff that's not on that list that they didn't already.
And that would be those meeting rooms, right, that you talked about, you needed, that we could build inside the current library, that's not on their list.
That's not on their list and that's some, that's a smaller project, we could have it done in a year. And it would be a successful Measure J project that we could put a sign on and, um, they, I think that would be a good, good idea, good thing.
David, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so I, my que- I have a question. The question is, is the fray building on the city's radar?
Yes.
In, in any kind of form?
Yes.
So, okay, so since it is, it would seem to make sense to, at least to me, representing the foundation, that we use this opportunity to apply for a grant for something else. Because if the city's gonna do the fray building either way, then why are we doing this? Let's do it for something else. And if we need the, the meeting room at the library, or if, if Genie, you need something like totally out of the box thinking, let's do it. Cause I was just reading the criteria and they want, it says, it, it needs to benefit the most people in the city, blah, blah, blah. Is it green, is it sustainable? So I don't wanna go through that, but my point, I think you guys know my point, because let's, let's go after something different.
So David, to answer your question, um, the last Measure J meeting that I went to, and granted, it, it was, they were on, they were dark and they're now sort of meeting again, but they were at that time discussing their five-year plan. The library is everywhere, the fry building is in the first two-year planning and then the main library fall is in there as well. So, yes, we're, we're on their radar now. We need to firm that in their, on their list, right? So we got a little work to do there, Genie does, we all do. But you're right, we could, we could ask for a hundred thousand dollars to build meeting facilities. And then we all agree that, you know, we might take some trust fund, we might take some money from the foundation. They asked the friends to give it maybe the icing on the cake, if the city will build the basic meeting room for Genie. Is that what you're, is that what you're thinking? I mean, we could, we could certainly do that.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, let's do something that's not on their radar.
And, uh, if you go to Measure J, if you go to the city's website and you find the Measure J section, uh, just Google Measure J Palm Springs and you can go to their page. There's a tab on the left that says Measure J funded projects and has a full list of everything that they've done. And there are things like, um, excuse me, uh, James O. Jesse kitchen equipment, um, la- lights, underwater lights for the pool, um, they did a shade structure at the Mizel. Um, so, but they've done all kinds of, uh, uh, visitor center landscaping, library computers was forty-seven thousand eight hundred, that was more than I thought. But, um, there are all kinds of things, village green improvements, um, bike trail fencing, trash service on the trails, it was a, a water found replacement at Sunrise Park, so.
Honestly, they probably wanna do a, a lot more smaller projects rather than giving all the money to one or two or three groups. They'd probably like to divide this many up as much as they can, to do as many projects as they can to give everybody a piece of the action and so everyone feels appreciated.
I agree, and I, I think it might, might be a strong application is if, for example, if the trustees decide to do this, in our application, we're saying that, you know, we're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars to help Genie build a meeting room and we're willing to take twenty-five thousand dollars out of the trust fund to match that to give for fifty thousand dollars. I think that, you know, showing that we're putting some money into it as well, might give them pause for saying, okay, they're really serious about doing this and we can help them do it, right? Um, and I just made those numbers up, by the way, guys, so I'm, I'm not, all I'm saying is that in, in history, we, we've used trust fund money like the Wellwood patio, for example. So it wouldn't be out of our purview to say we want to, we need some more money to help her achieve her goal of more meeting facilities. Um, we just need to know what that, and Genie, have we ever, I don't know, you're gonna roll your eyes when I ask you this, have we ever looked at price for putting in a meeting room in those spaces? I, I, do we have any idea what it would cost?
No, not on that one, not on that room. I don't know.
It doesn't need that much though, does it?
Uh-huh.
Oh, does it? I've never seen it.
Yeah.
Paint, paint would do wonders.
Well, we know that, for example, what we're talking about here is that Genie has a storage room. I, and I, if I'm mislabeling these, please forgive me, but there's a storage room that she's talked about emptying out to make kind of like a boardroom meeting facility for small groups. And then she's got another much larger group room that we talked about being able to even maybe divide it with dividers if, in make a, a larger meeting room, right, Genie, that's the space you're talking about?
Yeah, it just depends on how much actually we wanna take on this building before we decide what we're gonna do. We could, we could do those two spaces, uh, or we can do the first one first and get it up and running and, and then if, if there's still momentum and we haven't renovated the building yet, we could still work on that next room.
Agreed, now.
Things we can do.
When trustee Wimmerich was on the, we, I know that she walked around, we looked at it back then. We certainly don't want to invest in that building for something that we might be tearing down in the next four or five years, right? So I know that we had looked at cheaper materials and what I mean by cheaper, you know, glass versus putting up walls, for example. Or, you know, it's, it's a matter of like she just said, painting and maybe buying some nice furniture, maybe some nice, you know, technology to put in the meeting room. So we're not talking about building a, a, a great facility that would be torn out. So I think we have to keep that in mind as well too.
So I think the most expensive part of that room would probably be the technology. So laptops was, we need, we're at the point where we need new laptops, um, by a, a flat screen TV, which is not expensive comparatively to actually used to cost. And then, um, we probably need to put a new door on that room because it's a solid wood door. And I would like to have a see-through door, you know, I would like to have a room where I could see in, see what's going on. Um, the door, it, the, the door is like a ten-foot tall solid wood door, so it, fire a custom door.
Are you talking about the smaller space or a larger space?
The smaller one.
Okay, so, and then, then.
Both, actually, they're, they're. Both, actually, they're, they're all like that.
So that, that room then is available for us to have our meetings, for their friends to have their meetings, for the foundation to have their meetings. I mean, you know, it becomes a, a place for the community. We're all a community. And we, we, we struggle with that. I hope someday we all meet in person again. So I, and other, I know there's many other groups in the city who don't have a place to go to have a meeting that would love to have something they could use, right? So I, I really, I think that a current meeting facility in the main library, I'd like to ask for it all. I'd have for the big one and the larger one and see what they give us, right? And go from there.
I can't, I can't do the, what we're calling the larger room. I can't do that one. Move the archive until the Frye Building's done. Because I don't.
Oh, yeah, you reminded me of that. It's a domino effect, right? To empty that spot, we had to put it somewhere, right?
Yeah.
So that, that would be, you have nowhere else to put it, right? It won't fit in the office bathroom where that table is sitting? I'm just kidding.
I know. That's what Lisa's, is now, her office is now storage and she moved into the other room.
I'm, I'm just concerned that we're going to take our focus off of the Frye Building and that is something we need to get accomplished because other things will move into place after we do that.
Yeah, that's, um, so the question is then, Dr. Borba, do we, do we raise that flag now in this process? Make them aware that we are behind it or?
Just be, yeah, the concern I have is just because they're aware of this project doesn't mean they're going to ever fund it.
Exactly.
So I'm.
There's no reason why we can't schedule a time and go talk to them, you know, they certainly would talk to us.
You know, it might be about momentum, right? If it is on their radar, if they are thinking about it, maybe we can push them to do something about it. Because like Dr. Borba said, just because it's on their radar, doesn't mean they're going to do it. So if, if it's on their radar, they're thinking about the Frye Building and then we give them that extra push, that might be what it takes to actually accomplish something.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, that's just.
No, having done that in my career where you, you, you pepper a future project as part of your request, saying, in preparation for the Frye Building, we're asking for money to build this, build, you know, this meeting room. Hey, I've been there, I've done that. I mean, you know, you do that. And I think we've got to get ready to go see, visit Measure J Commission. I think we've got to get in front of them real soon. And luckily, most of us know at least one person on that commission, if not multiple. So, and a former trustee, by the way, sits on that commission, which is in our favor. So I think that it's, it's worth finding out how soon we can go speak to them. But in the meantime, what do you guys, what's the pleasure of the group here, including the president of the trustees and the friends? I mean, do you guys, you know, what, what do you want to do? I think we beat this one to death. Suggestions?
We want to do what everybody else wants to do. So if it's the Frye Building, then let's do it.
Do you want to, you want to decide now or do you want to maybe schedule a, a smaller ad hoc group? To come together?
Well, it, it just so, just, let's see here. We do have a committee.
Do you think there's any point in meeting with the Measure J people before we do this?
I, not without having discussed and know what we want, because if we go before them and we, and they ask us a pointed question, we've missed an opportunity, right?
Yeah, 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 you're right.
Not to say that if any of you bump into someone at a cocktail party, you can't say, hey, we're working on something, right? But let's see. Yeah, we, we, we have a building standing committee. Right now, we have one member on there, Dr. Borba. But we certainly could have the trustees building committee. I'm happy to, to join that or if one of the others want to join that, along with David and Nancy and have a call and just talk about how we organize ourselves around this so that we're not stepping on one another and we get this underway. How's that?
Can I make a suggestion that you don't, that you don't utilize the standing committee portion of this? Because a standing committee has to be a public meeting and has to be agendized. But if you wanted to have a volunteer group of people get together, you could add, it's not related to the building. This is related to the Measure J application.
Measure J application volunteer committee, do I have two trustees who would like to volunteer for it? Trustee Gardner, are you raising your hand or you, you have something to say?
I'm raising my hand, yes.
Ed, I think you need to be on the committee.
Okay, so that's, that's it then. So Juanita and I and David and Nancy, can we maybe schedule a time and talk about the application and who wants to do what? And of course, Jeannie, you can be there too, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll send out a request to everybody and see how soon we can get everyone together for a call and go from there. How's that?
Sounds good.
I'm looking at the commission members, Ed. Aren't there two former trustees on that?
I don't know. Who's, oh. Linda Futur is one of them.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking of, but I thought there was one other.
Who else?
David Gray used to be, but I don't see him listed.
Who?
David Gray.
Yeah, I think David is off of it now.
Okay.
I think.
It looks like they have two vacancies.
Yes, they do.
They do. And the new chair was just in my business last week, we were talking, so he's, he asks, when is the library coming to see us? So I know that there's interest there, so.
How do you get on to the commission?
You have to leave this commission.
Oh, you have to leave this one. You can't, okay.
You can't, you can't serve on two unless it's.
Okay.
And we'll, and we will find your phone number. But I, I think that it's probably okay for us to, as part of this application process, clearly we need to plant, if not go after Frye Building. But we certainly, when we walk away from that, if they give us ten thousand dollars, I know we're coming back for more for the Frye Building. You know, I hope they give us more than that, but clearly it's a priority for them and for us. And let's not forget, we want a whole new library to begin with, so that's also in there.
Okay, I, I see two people on this commission that I could talk to about. So I will lobby.
But I know Al Jones knows several of them.
Yeah. All of them.
Okay, good.
All right, so I'll work on getting, I'll send an email to everybody to get that meeting scheduled as soon as possible. Okay. Great discussion. It's exciting to go after money. I love doing that. All right, let's see. So speaking of going after money, our next topic is the California State Library Grant Application, Building Forward Library Infrastructure Program Request to Provide Support to City Council for Application. Jeannie, what do you need from us?
I need just allies on this one. The California State Library has received four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars in one-time funds to create Equity Focused Matching Infrastructure Grant Program to support local library maintenance, capital projects, broadband and technology upgrades and purchasing of devices. So this project is, I'm sorry, I can't share my screen, but I'm really irritated at this, this computer right now. I, I have no controls. I can't mute myself. I can't make somebody a co-host. I have nothing. So I'm frustrated, sorry, a little frustration there. So this grant application process, they're doing preliminary applications right now through the end of October to kind of get an idea of what the need is. Now, the, the way that it's been described is that it's for, the funding that we can request is for infrastructure upgrades that support life safety needs specifically. There's an SB, let me see, what is it? SB one twenty-nine, I believe is what it is. It's in your packet.
Yeah.
I, the example, SB one twenty-nine, SB one twenty-nine information that I saw was super small. It was just like infrastructure. So we've got to find out the definitions and be sure we could justify our life safety needs. But, and we have a lot here at the library that would qualify because we don't have sprinklers, we don't have a backup generator, where we've got ADA compliance issues. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of need. It requires a dollar-for-dollar match from, now the money, where the money comes from, it could come from anywhere. It could come from the trust fund, the foundation, the friends, the city, a combination of all of that. Because of our, where we are qualified in the tiers, we are required to do dollar-for-dollar match where we fall. So we can apply for up to ten million dollars, which means we would need to justify twenty million dollars in need for this grant. I mean, we could obviously apply for less. If we only found that we had ten million dollars total, we could apply for a five million dollar grant. I'm not saying that we have to apply for ten, but boy, wouldn't it be nice if we could get twenty million dollars?
Yeah, but coming up with that other ten is going to be difficult right now.
Well, that's where Measure J could come in, the, like I said, the trustees, the friends, the foundation. The grant process, so the application starts in December and tentatively they have the deadline set to, for February to end the application period. Funds can be awarded through 2024 and then funds need to be expended prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So that's good news. If we did get the grant, we would have time to do it.
What year? I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty-six. So we've about four and a half years to do the project and come up with the money. So this could be something in Measure J, wanted to do this, they could, they could parse out two million a year for five years and, or, you know, make up, do the math and make it less than that, obviously. It's based on poverty level and we are at twenty, twenty percent of our community is below the poverty level, I believe is what the, what the number means. So we would be competing in that aspect, too. So they would take poverty priorities first, I think, is how they're, they're planning to do this. So it's a competition for the funds. So.
Jeannie, in looking at the application, this sounds like this would be perfect if we wanted to go to the state library and say, over the next six years, we will be doing a major remodel of our current facility to bring it to ADA compliant and to safety standards for earthquake, which is probably what's going to rear its ugly head when we start redoing that building. We know that.
It's part of our, it was part of the plan. We knew that, we know that we do need earthquake retrofitting, too.
It sounds like this, this is perfect match money to what Measure J would want to probably would be giving us as well, right? So, and it's the timeframe, correct?
Yeah, wouldn't it be amazing to take Measure J funds and get fifty cents on the dollar?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's a bargain.
Because then the money from the foundation and the friends and even trust fund, once again, goes to the icing on the cake. That's the things that we want to, but the state library, which when I worked in, when I worked in San Francisco, the state library paid a great deal of money to retrofit all the old branches that were not earthquake compliant. This is, this is very common for them to do this kind of thing. So, I mean, it's a perfect, for us at this point in our history, where we want money to pay for brick and mortar and not have to use our money that we want to spend for Koi ponds, you know?
Yeah, furnitures, fixtures, things like that.
Correct.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of this because this is something also that, you know, I'm already working with the city to talk, you know, talk to the different departments to find out cost estimates or what we need or what's, what's considered qualifiable so that we can put, put a package together as a government. And we have to apply as a city. We, you know, the friends apply for this, the foundation, the, the board doesn't apply for this. The city applies for this grant. So I just want you to be aware of it.
Well, I think your strong application also does include what we just went through this evening with the priorities. You've got citizen groups that are willing to raise money as well for this project. So not only would you use city funds for matching, but, you know, the community is getting behind, you know, a new library as well, right? So that, is that, that would be, I think, very strong, knowing that, how they work, right?
Yeah, there's even a thing you can, you could do a justification. If your building's too far gone, you could do a justification for a new library. But I don't, I know our community is not behind doing anything to, to. There's no way. We are not.
We're sure very nice to see that beautiful annex to the main library be built by state library. Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, unless we can justify that this building's too far gone and we need to build next door in the yard and then this building, but still this building needs all that stuff, so I don't know how that.
Exactly. I mean, if you read this, all the things that we know that's going to eat up the money that we're looking for, the state is willing to help us meet that need, right? That's, somebody's smiling on us, I think, right?
It's a great opportunity. I.
Wonderful opportunity.
Yeah.
So what do you, what do you need from us? I mean, do you need, do you need help from us or you, are you?
I want to make everybody aware of it. The more I talk about it, I hope that we will all have positive thoughts about it. If you, if it comes up with, with Measure J Ask or at the community level where we're talking city council members or we're at city council advocating, when this comes before city council, I hope that everybody can help advocate for the grant application approval. Obviously, I, they were, there's no way that they would say, no, we're not going to apply. I think that, that would, it could match, unless there's no way we can match.
Do you need each of us to reach out to those people that we have contact with on city council or Measure J to put a bug in their ear that we're working on this?
You could, so it, it's the time. I mean, we're, we're getting ready to start the application.
You know, it would be great if the Measure J committee would sign on as a partner with us on this so that we know that there's money committed on that other half.
Yeah, and that's, that's a city council decision ultimately, so.
I bet city council will throw this over to them.
I think, yeah, I don't, I'm not, I'm, I don't think anybody's going to say no.
No.
I just got to make sure we've got everything, all our ducks in.
A lot of money. It's a lot of money, right? I mean, I know it's.
The match is a, is a lot of money, too.
But if we, if, if it's budgeted and, and Measure J can get around and say, you know, we're, we're planning on doing ten million anyway, it's surely nice to have ten million from the state. There's twenty million right there towards the project.
Yep.
That's.
Kind of wrap it up.
That's a no-brainer.
Right, yeah. The, things like carpet and paint are not included, but we'll.
But all the other stuff that you know you've got to have in that building. ADA compliant bathrooms, you know, and we don't know what's going to uncover when we start getting into there when it comes to earthquake safety. We really don't know.
And I, I, I'm assuming we can add on to space to the library? If.
It wouldn't be covered, I don't think.
Well, what happens if our bathrooms are so out of compliance that we would have to add bathrooms to the building? Then you convert the bathrooms into something else.
Cover, that would have to be covered, Jeannie, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we just have to justify that, that sort of a thing, I think. Yeah, yeah, there's a way to make this work. I, I want everybody to know about it.
Thank you.
Everybody to be able to think about it or if anybody asks you, oh, yeah, yeah, we know all about this. We're ready. So.
Great opportunity.
Portion.
Yeah.
Well, I, that's great to know. I mean, I, so all of you that have any contacts on city council or Measure J, I think putting a word in that this grant is coming down from the state library and it might be an opportune time for the city to go after some of this money to match the funds that we're planning on raising anyway and putting into the main library. I think it's a great opportunity, so. All right, Jeannie, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Jeannie on this grant?
No.
Okay. We had reconfirmed committee interest. Is that on there, Jeannie? Because we, we keep carrying that to make sure that now that.
I have a conflict on policy.
I have a conflict on policy bylaws committee because I, we can only have two, and I wasn't sure who, that, so, uh, we should, yeah, just reconfirm, uh, but that one specifically, we need someone to step back.
And so, um, fellow trustees, here's a list, we need to fill this out, so as we just said, someone needs to maybe volunteer to go to advocacy or buildings.
Well, okay, I was gonna say, I'll pull off of policies and bylaws if that helps, helps out.
All right, thank you, and, um, never leave, uh, trustee Gardner and Norgard on policies advocacy. Um, you know, you can, you can, well, I'm already on to, anyone that want to volunteer, I don't mind doing advocacy, Jeannie, but is there anyone else who might want to do that as well? So, put my name
Describe, I, I'm sorry, Ed, describe the role of the advocacy committee.
So, this is mo- most common in my experience, let's say that we are going with our application before city council. We're advocating for the library, so I would go speak on our behalf to city council. By the way, even though we have someone assigned to this, if you raise your hand and say, hey, look, I, I'm dying to go speak to city council, you certainly can do that. It's not restricted, it's just that we have someone assigned to it, and oftentimes, if someone from city council or Measure J reaches out to Jeannie, says, we want to hear from the trustees, that's our, that's the person who goes, right? So it's, it's kind of a, just so we have someone who knows is their responsibility.
Yeah, I would assume that would be the role of president, quite frankly.
Yeah, and I certainly, and, but you know, I might tap into one of you guys to go with me, or to, you know, speak on something that you are an expert
Well, then I think it would fall next to the vice chair, which would be great.
Yeah, Craig's on it, so we'll, we'll put me down on this one, and I reserve the right to draft others to help me. However, I want to tell you, I don't know what, I, I always get stuck on bylaws committees, so please forgive me on this, but I was thinking, we do have a bylaw update. Now that we have to elect officers in July, we've got to make a change to our bylaws. So the bylaw committee, right off the bat, you guys need to come together and look at that in our bylaws. And i- it's a very simple change, but we need to get that done and before all of us and vote on it.
Right.
It has to be compliant, yeah.
Yeah, uh, cause we had it changed to Jul-, no, not July, we had it changed for January. Now we're gonna change it back to July, when we have to elect officers, so, uh, trustee Norgard and Gardner, can you guys come together, look at the, the bylaws, make that change suggestion and bring it back to us as soon as you can, and we'll vote on it and it's done.
I think, I think the title's changed also.
Yes, yeah, so, of the, of the officers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have the virtual document, you know, the Word document, so we can, uh, work with, work together.
Great.
It'll be painless, I promise. Don't, don't uncover anything else, so just, if you want to. But, as a matter of fact, I shouldn't say that, it's always good to pull those things out and look at them every once in a while, and just make sure that everything's in order, cause you never know when we might need them, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, um, trustee staff or any future agenda, any comments?
I know we're gonna be bringing you, um, the annual report. And, um, to request approval of that, so that then we can submit that to the city council as per your bylaws. Uh, that should be coming up. You have some other, uh, we, we want to do some policy, uh, updates, too. We've been to do a Chromebook policy, but, um, I know that one is coming too, but um, is there anything else for you open a meeting?
When do we get the annual reports from the foundation and the friends? I mean, don't we get something from both those groups saying, here's where we did and what's going on? I mean, I remember doing those.
Like March or April is when, I think, something like that.
I think because, um, they, they, do you run calendar year? Um, with the foundation, I know the friends tend to run a calendar year, but they know, the friends don't give you a, uh, an annual report.
Foundation did, and I think that was just part of our agreement, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, well, uh, if there's nothing else, um, I'd like to, uh, call the meet, we'll call the meeting to an end. I have, uh, at the time, the seven oh five. And again, thank all of you for your service, your participation, and, uh, great group, great meeting, and as in the glamorous words of Matthew Morris, so let's get moving, right?
Yes, exactly.
All right, guys, thank you, guys, have a nice evening.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeannie?
Yes.
Uh, is our next meeting gonna be, um, face-to-face?
Uh, I, I don't think so. I don't know, the city council's still, uh, meeting virtually, so we're, we follow them.
Okay, uh, just let us know if we can, okay?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you. I can't end the meeting. Here we go.